I was reading the ordinance this Saturday night and I said, oh, are you working? I said, whoa, no, it's not like I'm working. I have fun. I don't consider it like work. Nice, thank you. I was telling my wife on Saturday, she's like, are you, are you working?
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to our city council meeting for December the ninth, 2024. We have an invocation this evening provided by our Director of Parks and Rec, Ms. Christmas Short, and then we will follow with the pledge of allegiance. Christmas?
Dearly Father, we come before you with gratitude for this opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the many blessings that you have poured out upon our city, its people, and our leaders. As we gather here tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in decisions that are made. Help us to lead with integrity, humility, and compassion, always seeking what is best for those we serve. Bless each council member, city staff, and every individual present here and online. Unite us in the purpose and inspire us to work together with respect and understanding. We pray for the well-being of our city, for its safety, prosperity, and peace. May your efforts reflect your goodness, may our efforts reflect your goodness and bring you honor. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have first the approval of minutes as written. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, they stand as written. So we'll move into our reports from council members, starting with Ward One. Councilwoman O'Shaughnessy?
Well, I won't, I won't take up a lot of time tonight, but of course mentioning quite a great job the fellows have done picking up the trees and brush. We've still got a lot of areas that's got some of that out there. And I don't know, kind of working some of it for downtown, I believe, but I know Eddie and his crew put in a lot of time and effort, and they've done a really good job. Of course, Merry Christmas to everybody. And I would like to point out that this got real popular to have a lot of lights on some houses. And you need to go down Robinall Drive, if you turn off the callister, go down Robinall. You'll see them on the left, a young Mr. Gillespie, and it looks fantastic. So you need to go check all that out. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Ward Two, Councilwoman Davidson?
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for their recent prayers and support. Last month at a chamber event that I had the privilege of attending, now that I saw that Dr. Sowards just came in, I wanted to say that congratulations to him because we had a number of new members that were introduced at the chamber meeting. So he's working diligently to grow our chamber members. This has also been a very busy time for the city with many events, and I'd like to remind everybody of the Parade of Lights this Saturday at 6:00 PM. Our municipal court, he's filming, there was an increase in cases filed, bench warrants, warrants issued, and search warrants, as well as bond hearings. And so we appreciate all the work done by the staff. And the fire department in their report showed a decrease in the number of vehicle accidents requiring the fire department to respond, which is always good news. And then most importantly, just a reminder of the reason for the season and to wish everyone here a merry and blessed Christmas with their family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Three, Councilwoman Rainey?
Excuse me, I'm suffering from a sinus infection. Justin Alexander and I attended a council orienting class, orientation class that was given by the Appalachian Council on Governments, and it was a very excellent class. And if you ever want to run for council, request that you go to that class because it's very informative. I'll let Justin speak for himself on his, on the class. Mr. O'Shaughnessy wasn't able to attend, but he was given the documents. I also want to mention that the ACOG, which is the Appalachian of Council of Governments, can also help council with goal setting for budgets. So I had talked to the city administrator about that to see if they could get someone from ACOG in here to help us set goals for the city as well. I've also had a few emails from constituents that has contacted me to express concern with combining raises into one ordinance for mayor and council and feels that it should be a separate voting, which I agree to that as well. People should be able to see specific voting instead of bundling these together. Another concern is there are quick rush to remedy the expense payment issue due to legal concerns where other issues that are clearly against ordinances get pushed aside and are accepted as is. And then I had another constituent was concerned with how planning commission members were selected. It seems as though the decision was decided by some individuals and expects the council to vote yes. And then the other thing is, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you. Ward Four, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, good evening. Recently, we attended a ribbon cutting for favor upstate at Brushy Creek. This is a nonprofit organization that provides support for people with substance abuse disorders. This is another good example of a good resource and asset for our community. We had a nice Christmas tree lighting the other night. I hope everyone was there. It was really nice and successful. The city staff did a great job of putting it all together. Everyone seemed to have a good time. Just wanted to thank you all for your support. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a blessed Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five, Councilman Alexander?
Yes, the training was extremely good. It was kind of an introduction to council, but it was, yeah, it was extremely good. I've been contacted by a couple of people about a trailer that was left near the dual trail, near the, near Yumi and the gas station there. The city is aware of that and is currently working on that. I don't want to go into a lot of details because it, well, I don't want to go into a lot of detail here, but they are actively working on that. Later tonight, we're going to vote on appointments to two important boards. There are more than one candidate for each position, but if you look at the agenda, there's only one person to vote for, for each position. It's my understanding that the mayor, city administrator, and another staff member selected which of the candidates we'd be voting on tonight. While this is an improvement from the prior administration's practice, I believe the code gives the council the responsibility for electing the board members and that that should be a vote on, a vote amongst all the applicants. That's why I'll be making a motion to table these appointments until January.
Okay, thank you. Ward Six?
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Is that your report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Can I second that one? Amen.
Good job. Okay, for my mayor's message this month, the month of Christmas, I want to thank our city teens for putting together a fabulous Christmas lineup. I mean, it is, we've had the Christmas tree lighting, we've got the Santa visits, the sleigh rides, the carriage rides, the movies. We have had so many people that have loved that and come to our city because it's been such great, great events, and it takes all of you. And we are so blessed to have people that love the community and are committed to putting together these opportunities. I know it's been challenging because we have had that enormous response and the large crowds, but that just shows how wonderful the city is and that the events are so, so popular and so many people are excited, as I said, to participate and show up. I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and that you have a blessed holiday season with your families. Remember, this season is a struggle for a lot of people. It's a very difficult time of year for people that are newly, have just lost a member of their family, or they're struggling with depression, and it's difficult for many. So just be mindful of those that need your kindness more than ever during this time of year, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you too, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Next, we'll do updates on city activity. Mr. Counsel?
Yes, ma'am. Christmas Short come up and talk. We've already mentioned the Christmas parade and some other events, but let her update on anything else you might want to add to that.
Thank you, Mayor Council. First off, as Dr. Jones mentioned, our Christmas tree lighting, thank you all for being in attendance for that. That was a wonderful event. We do have our Breakfast with Santa coming up Saturday. As of 3:48 this afternoon, we had 993 individuals registered for it. Chief, we don't have to cook 2,000 pancakes because five points is going to volunteer for that. I want to put that on record this year. That's wonderful. And then Mr. Brian Sowards wanted me to also mention, several of us already mentioned the Christmas parade, which we know that's going to happen at six o'clock, but what you don't know is we have over 100 vendors this, or participants this year. That's not, that's far beyond what we've had in the past. So I think the highest number I can recall is about 70. So to have 100 is wonderful. And to also give you a little bit of data, I just had a meeting today and I did confirm that the numbers retreats on the street was 7.4,000.
Wow.
Thank you all for your support at our events. All our city staff worked hard to put those on for our community, and we're glad to see that people are coming out to enjoy them.
Thank you, Christmas, and Merry Christmas to all. That's all I have.
Okay. There are no community announcements scheduled for this evening. Nobody signed up for that. So next, we have citizens wishing to address city council. I remind everybody, hadn't done it in a while, that these are not vetted. This is the community's time to speak, make a statement, ask a question. It's not a forum. We cannot respond, but if you do have a question, please feel free to reach out to any of your elected officials via email to get an answer to that question. And then, of course, if it's department related, there are some department heads here that can speak with you after the meeting. So Jennifer?
Lisa Borean?
Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you for all that you do for us. My question is this. I went to the business meeting at five o'clock, and I saw that you guys are talking about doing a 25% raise because the county, city council and mayor have not had a raise in 16 years. Ms. Davidson said that is roughly 4% per, for year. No?
No, if it's 25% over 16 years, that's less than, oops, excuse me, I'm not supposed to, but that was not what I said, 2%.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2%. I apologize.
We're not supposed to have a, excuse me.
Sorry. I went and I took my notes wrong. I apologize. Thank you for correcting. Anyway, I know that going from $700 a month to $1,000 a month is only $300, and it doesn't seem like a lot. I work for a large corporation. I cannot say who. But for two years in a row, we were told they did not have money to give us raises. And we work 24/7 through COVID, through everything else, just like police and fire. And we were told by the CEO, how can we make your life better? And every employee sent in a thing saying we'd like a raise. We have never gotten a 25% raise, a 4% raise, 2% raise every year. Companies struggle. The city has a lot they want to do. I understand this is a part-time position. I know that some of you may put in more than 40 hours a month, some may put 160 hours a month. I don't know. I was not able to speak with each of you. We appreciate what you do, but think about the city and a 25% raise, whether you've had a raise in 16 years or not, may not seem like much to everybody else, but those of us that are hourly pay, it is a lot for us because we ride around the city, we see our taxes going up, and we appreciate everything you do. It's not city, the city of Easely is a great place to live. It's better than Greenville, Simpsonville, anywhere. But we ask that more transparency. If Justin hadn't said that the red pay went from 700 to $1,000 in the business meeting, we wouldn't have known how much y'all got paid unless we went back and looked at your budget and broke down what everybody got paid. And unfortunately, it's a lot of work because Justin and I did do that for some other things. So anyway, okay, if you could just be a little more transparent on what you decide and just think about it. And yes, everybody's going to ridicule me that it's 25% is nothing, but to those of us working hourly and don't get raises every year and never get a cost of living raise, that's what we call it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny McJunkin?
Good evening, Merry Christmas. I've got a couple of things I want to address. I have thought a lot about the ordinance you have before you concerning pay increases. At first, I was like, how dare they? And then I really thought about it. I'm okay with this initial pay increase. It, as Councilwoman Davidson pointed out, is 2% a year. I am personally aware of a large number of people that work for private corporations that get cost of living raises, much more generous than that. It's largely a thankless job what you do, a small pay increase. I don't have a problem with that. I really don't. I'm unsure how I feel about the proposal to have it brought up, the vote brought up automatically to vote on, not necessarily to automatically give a raise, but to have the opportunity to vote on a potential raise. Part of me is like, well, that would, that's reasonable, but then part of me thinks, well, pay raises for elected officials should be a little uncomfortable to bring up. It should be a little uncomfortable to bring up giving yourselves a raise. It shouldn't be easy to just, oh, well, it says we have to have a vote. But then, I can see both sides of that. I don't know about that. It is a fine line to walk with pay for elected officials in public service. There, back, way back at the founding of our country, there was this issue because initially only the very rich could afford to be public servants because they, you couldn't do a good job and have a job. So they needed to pay people so that you didn't just have the rich making all the rules. So I do fully think that paying public servants is a great idea so that you have a wide variety of people making the rules for everyone. That's my rambling thoughts on that issue. We are all frustrated with the sticks, branches, trees, and such on the sides of the roads. I would encourage everybody here, go talk to people at the county level because they are limiting the city to five loads a day, and ask them what these outside contractors are doing because I haven't seen them in my neighborhood. Not related to city council, but. I would also like to bring up the new business ordinance, 2024-15, to rezone 0.815 acres of real property located at 738 East Main Street. Anytime something like this comes up, it makes me go, hey, why are we wanting to zone something commercial? Wait a minute. So I spoke with the property owner and found out that they do not have a commercial buyer. They're just wanting to have the option that if a commercial buyer comes forward, that they could entertain that offer. It's a lovely house. It would be perfect for an attorney's office or something along those lines. It is beside commercial property. It is right near the huddle. It is right near the downtown commercial district. I think that's perfectly reasonable to allow that to be zoned commercial after getting more information. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela Moss?
Well, that was a segue I didn't expect. My topic tonight is the ordinance as well, the 2025-15, or, excuse me, 2024-15. I'm a resident of Townsend Drive. Townsend runs between D Street and Southway Street, also near the huddle and everything. So between me and the property itself, there's only one more house behind us, and then there's the main street with the property. It's a beautiful home. It's been there forever. Everybody knows it as the Hillard House, and it was part of the Merks and the things that they've done with that property. They've done some beautiful work on the inside of it. We also attended the Planning Commission and Zoning Board back a couple of weeks ago, and the discussion was very open. And I've actually made notes today, but I'm going to bear off of, I would just kind of follow through. And it was like, well, nobody really wants it as residential because it is sitting on Main Street. The issue is, we already have way too much traffic up and down D Street, Southway Street, and my street, which is a cut through, there's only nine houses, but they cut through from D Street over to Southway for the daycare. When you look at, from the road of Main Street, that is already commercial where Merks is, and we have the old Armory, is that the Armory or the rec building? Excuse me. Behind that, you have a couple of daycares. There's this gradual creep of commercial properties, and we'd like to see that stopped because there's already too much traffic, too much cut through. People are enjoying this neighborhood and walking from down around the other areas of the neighborhood. So it is a existing neighborhood, and we're asking that, you know, while we have these other discussions about residential properties and the growth that we have in the city of Easely, we're in the middle of it, and we love it. It's a historical kind of setting, and by eliminating that and allowing a general construction, you're undermining what we're trying to do for the beautification of Easely. So by doing that, we understand that the pricing is higher than the average person wants to purchase a residential property. It's a large home, three stories. But by being, you know, it's just not desirable supposedly for the residential, so therefore we just say general commercial. Well, we would like it not to be general commercial. If you wanted to go with a office-type situation, there's a couple of houses that are across on Main Street that are situated, they do not interfere. But what we're afraid of is they have been approached by one, that I'm aware of, it was brought up, by a restaurant locally. So can it be a restaurant? Well, if it's general commercial, it can be. It can be a massage parlor. It can be a lot of different things that we don't want our children or our elderly neighbors to have to worry about with the turn in to their residential neighborhood or walking with their dogs or their children. There's already too much traffic. They are not, they've, they've tried and tried to do some.
I'm sorry, we have three-minute limit, but.
Was that three? I didn't see you do that. Okay, we're against.
But we appreciate.
We are against.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it? Okay. All righty, then we will move in to our unfinished business ordinance, second reading, ordinance 2024-11 to amend section 30.08, compensation and expenses of chapter 30 of Title III of the Easely City Code. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor?
I make a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor.
Second.
Second, okay.
Mayor Talbott, I make a motion to amend the ordinance before us to incorporate and reflect the salary adjustment ordinance that I sent everyone from Greenville County with the city attorney making appropriate changes to the wording of this ordinance as far as the dates in it and references to Greenville County, certainly changing that to city of Easely, but I move that that be added, not changing the body of the ordinance in front of us, but this be added as an additional section to it.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you say something?
No.
Okay, is there just?
Discussion?
Okay, I'll, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the ordinance as read except as Mr. Robinson noted to be amended by our attorney to incorporate the similar language that you mentioned?
Point of order. I, I believe we have the first vote on Mr. Robinson's amendment.
That's what we're voting on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying the whole thing.
We're voting on the motion.
Yes, we're voting on the motion to amend.
Thank you.
Okay? All in favor of amending the motion? Okay? All against? Okay. So now, we go to the original, or no?
Now you're, now the vote would be.
On his, on the, on the amended.
As amended.
Okay, we're going to vote, we need a motion.
Wait a minute, I want to make a motion. As we discussed during the work session, to change it to the limitations that was discussed of 300 for the mayor, and this is expenses and 100 for council.
Second.
Okay, so now, you're going to have to help me stack these Robert's roles, Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
Ms. Rainey's motion is, just to make sure I got a correlative, council understands under section B, you want to establish a cap of the fee reimbursement of 300 and 100. Okay? But everything else in that section would remain the same, correct?
As amended.
Right.
Because that was first.
That's correct. Okay.
And there was a second.
So we need to, her motion, we need a first and a second.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Okay, all in favor of amending the first amendment to her amendment? Okay? And none against? Now, we've done three motions. What are we voting on? Are we done?
We have, we have two amendments to the motion, to the ordinance that have been approved.
Okay.
So now we are voting to approve the ordinance.
As amended.
With, with, with Mr. Robinson's amendment and Ms. Rainey's amendment.
Okay. But then, that 300 and 100, that's not on top of.
That's for '25?
That's just for 2025.
Correct.
Okay, that was not said. Okay, so for everybody watching.
So the new stuff is 2026. We can't vote on it in this council.
Yeah, but just so that everybody understands that that's for 2025. Okay.
So now we're going to have a motion to vote on what was all amended, correct?
The ordinance as amended.
The ordinance as amended. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
I think we did that earlier.
I'm just doing it.
But then we do.
We're just following the attorney's instructions.
Always a good idea.
Yeah? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, discussion on the ordinance.
Discussion on the ordinance. We can do it again, yep.
Okay. I think we should strip out the pay raises because it's not in effect until 2026, and just discuss that next year, and let's get this violation of state law corrected on those expenses.
This has been, I think, an issue for a lot of people, and I know with one particular councilman that I've been, which will remain nameless, I said that that person has received a lot of comments about this. It's never a popular topic. I know that since I believe, since I was on council, it never came to council, but there was discussion of having raises which were far higher than what is being proposed now. And what I've tried to explain and said more of in the work session was that the vast majority of us here are not spring chickens, so we're not going to be here forever. And we have to look futuristically and to follow up with Ms. Borean's comment that I wasn't supposed to respond to, that even though it can be at times a thankless job, it is a gratifying job, but it also has to be a little bit of a financial incentive for, to bring people on. And you're going to see later on when we discuss another topic, how little interest there is despite the fact that there was advertisement. So I don't know whether this will encourage more people to run or not, but what this board, what this council is doing is looking forward as far as the future of Easely and future council people.
And I know Mr. Fetter, and I'm not having a conversation with him, but he is in the room, had brought up at one point that some of our council meeting agendas were difficult to understand for the people that just come and pick up an agenda. So I, I understand that this is, this has been complicated for us. It has taken several months working with our attorney to cover all what ifs, ands, therefores, and then what if about this? So it's been difficult, but this has gone back. This will be the fourth legislation of this, and the, the most recent minutes I was able to pull myself was from 2022 when they were discussing, we had administrator Mr. Baldwin here, and Mr. Holcomb was here. I'm not sure if he was the administrator at that point with Mr. Baldwin here, but the, the legislation at that time was the.
the, the legislation at that time was the designation of gross versus net and cleaning that up because of the way that we have to report to the Ethics Commission. And if you're an elected official or if you work with the city, you know you have to file a statement of intent every year and it has to be reported a certain way. So it's very, very complicated and there was discussion of the filing of expenses and the cost to the city of the dollar here and the $2 here and the $3 here, so all, all intentions have been good in the history of the city to try to do what's right and to also compensate. I think it's just been confusing and we're trying as best we can with the help of our beleaguered attorney to straighten all this out. And then Mr. Robinson, of course, suggested, since it had been 16 years, while we're doing it, so we're like, while we're changing the carpet, let's paint the walls, so I appreciate that. Nobody liked my suggestion for us to all work for free, so here we are. And if there's any questions about the timeline of this, then email and let us know, but any further discussion amongst council before we vote on what has been amended?
To the mayor's point, talking about it being complicated, I just don't feel like, especially me, I'm not gonna talk for anybody else, that Mr. Robinson found this article about what the Greenville Council is doing with their pay and having a 30-minute discussion, I just don't feel like, you know, we have really vetted this out. I feel like it's being rushed and like I said, it does not go into effect until '26. There is no, absolutely no reason why it cannot wait until next year. And let us really talk about this. The, the amounts that we were presented, they were already decided, we didn't even get to, you know, talk about it among ourselves or whatever. But I think, you know, like I said, I think we need to, you know, pull the salary part out and let us thoroughly discuss it, even when we're discussing the budgets. And then, you know, put it back on the agenda to be voted on and just pass the, the expense part right now.
Well, now, council did discuss this at the retreat at length.
I don't, it was not at length.
It was three hours, but that's okay.
We did not discuss the salary for three hours.
Ms. Rainey, you, you may want more money than what's been proposed here, but I think that's a plenty.
I'm not, I'm not asking for more.
I don't think you need to suggest we raise more.
No, I'm not asking that. I don't think we need a raise.
Oh, you don't want any at all?
No.
Okay, well, I misunderstood, I thought you wanted us to get a bundle.
No.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, call for the vote. And I hope Mr. Hughes helped me do this correctly, we are voting, do I hear a motion to vote on the ordinance as amended by Mr. Robinson and Ms. Rainey? Is there a motion?
We've already got a first and a second.
To vote, so we can vote.
Yes.
Okay, we gonna vote, okay. All in favor of the ordinance as amended by Mr. Robinson and Ms. Rainey, raise your hand. Okay, all against? Okay, thank you very much. Move all to our second of the evening. Ordinance 2024-12 to extend the moratorium to temporarily suspend the acceptance of, review of, and/or action upon applications for zoning approvals, development, construction permits, and other action for an additional six months. This may not use six months, but it will allow us time to finish the UDO, get it through the commissions and the council. Any, just, any, I guess we need to make a motion to move this for, to the floor.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Talbot, I could talk for an hour on the moratorium, but I will spare you that. And I voted in favor of the initial six-month moratorium in a spirit of compromise and good faith with the new administration and the desires of at least some voters. And I'm told that this can be wrapped up within a few months and it should not need another extension. And having gotten this far with it, I'll vote to extend it one more time. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of voting to extend the moratorium? Okay, all opposed? Okay, moving on to item C, ordinance 2024-13 to authorize the lease of certain property located at 201 North First Street in the city of Easely to the Greater Easely Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully that's explicative of what we're doing. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of authorizing the lease of this property? Any opposed? No, okay. Ordinance 2024-14 to authorize the lease of certain property located at 201 South Fifth Street, Suite 212, which is at West End Hall to the, in the city of Easely, to United Way of Pickens County. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
Motion, yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of this ordinance to authorize the lease to the United Way of Pickens County at West End Hall? None opposed? And then, new business ordinance first reading, ordinance 2024-15 to rezone approximately .815 acres of real property located at 738 East Main Street and the intersection of South D Street and East Main Street from residential, which is R 7.5, to general commercial, which is GC. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Would, would it be, would it be appropriate to refer this back to, to the Planning Commission? Or, or is this, do we just have to yes, no?
Well, they, the Planning Commission's given us an opinion that we heard in the work session and it was for-
Four to one.
Four to one, I believe.
Okay.
So that's their recommendation, but it's up to you to consider how to vote and based on what you've been told.
I agree with the lady that talked about how commercial is encroaching into these subdivisions or residential areas. I'm thinking most people, when they're looking for a home, they're taking into consideration how close they are to commercial because they don't want the traffic, the noise, they want to be able to walk the streets and everything. And it seems like once you turn one thing into commercial, it starts creeping in and it's gonna destroy the life of the people that chose to live there. And I for one am not gonna vote for this.
During the work session, I think Ms. Moss, I read the minutes from the Planning Commission and being, having been on council and been involved in some of these decisions, understand that people own property, they want to manage their property. And looking at the plat, I recognize and acknowledge that there is considerable amount of residential homes in that area and I inquired about neighborhood commercial, something similar to an attorney's office or something on a smaller scale than perhaps a restaurant that would be general commercial. So at this juncture, I am not in favor of general commercial.
Any more discussion?
Mayor Talbot, as I've said before, it's my general policy not to vote against an ordinance on first reading to give it time to proceed to the next step. And here from all sides, this area, I think, is, this could go either way. East Main Street is a mixture of residential and commercial, but again, how I vote tonight is not necessarily an indication of how I might vote later.
I, I'm gonna join Ms. Robinson in that, I, I will vote to advance it to second reading, but there definitely are questions I have about it that I wanna clarify.
And me as well, but I'm gonna vote no tonight and we'll see what happens with the second reading.
Well, since everybody's talking, maybe I'll throw my two cents more then.
Please do.
Yes.
Nobody likes the way it is, but you don't want any change, right, Tom? Our city grows, things creep, it's kinda like gaining weight and you wake up one day and you're a big person, one day we wake up and we've got a larger city than we started out with. But me and Jim and David, we've been here a long time and we watched it go from just a few little buildings downtown with the railroad track through the middle to 123 being developed. And I love that house. I hadn't been in that house in a long time, but back when Jack Townsend lived there, before Aunt Sherry lived there. And Bob, yeah, I'm sorry, they're both dead now, but anyway, Bob and Jack. But that, that's a great-looking house and it's too bad, but that's the way life goes. Things expand and things grow. I'll vote for it and I'll vote for it today and I'll vote for it again next time. You know, that's the way it is. I've been down south way, I've seen the trees that got blown away, by the way. I've been down all of those streets and I love all that area and we getting one old house being renovated over there at the Huggles, so, but we don't, we don't necessarily like change, but that's the way it happens sometimes.
And I wanna clarify, Dr. Jones, you mentioned that you were gonna vote against it this time, but you agree with Mr. Robinson on, on proceeding to the next, but if it is voted down tonight, there will be no further consideration?
Yeah, I understand.
So if there is a consensus to explore it, then you, it would have to pass, but if everybody is pretty much against the zoning at all, then it would, you would vote. No, just clarifying for everybody. Any more discussion? I have a question for our planning and development. If this is, if this is voted down, does that mean it could not come back at another time?
If voted down, for one year, it cannot come back as general commercial.
For one year.
But it can come back as a different zone if you wanted to. And he's here, if he needs to talk to him, ask him a question, he is here, the owner.
Can we, can we have the owner speak? Mr. Hughes?
Counsel wants to hear from the applicant?
Yes. I, I would, I would like to hear, I guess, your intended use and I, I know it was spoken to earlier, but-
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm Britt Hilliard. My sister and I inherited my grandmother's house and like some of you in here, we grew up in that neighborhood. We ain't having to get rid of it, but we're getting up in age too and all we're doing now is paying taxes. All, all I was asking to do was have the opportunity for a lawyer's office, something to, to take down. So, that's all I was asking, just give us a little bit better opportunity to go ahead and say. You know, we grew up just like Mayberry, easily, but you know, things have changed a lot.
Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Hilliard?
If I'm, if I, what I'm hearing right, Maria, could you help out with this? If, if Mr. Hilliard is saying something similar to a doctor's office or a lawyer's office, would that fall more into neighborhood commercial?
It, it would, office institution, neighborhood commercial, but either way, I believe he has to reapply if he wants to do that.
But he would not have to wait a year, though?
Correct.
Okay.
It, it was, it was originally, when my grandparents bought it back in the 40s, it was a doctor's office.
Okay.
And-
Well, I wouldn't want to penalize, I would just wanna make sure that if, because I don't know how everybody else, well, I guess I should know how everybody else is voting, but if it was voted no, if it was voted down, you wouldn't be penalized for a year because you could come back and file for neighborhood commercial.
Yes, ma'am.
And then it could come back to council.
But just to remind you now, and I'm not putting Tor on, on the spot here, he has to look at that to make sure it meets all the codes as a, as a residence right now, but have to change to a commercial use, it may not be prudent to do that, would have to, have to do some study on that.
Okay, well, it's gonna, it would have to be, if it was general commercial, it would probably be torn down versus renovations for neighborhood commercial.
Well, you know, we having say in, in who buys it, you know, we've put a lot of money and time into that house and refurbishment, I wouldn't say.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready for the vote? Okay. All in, all in favor for rezoning .815 acres of real property located at 738 East Main Street and the intersection of South D and East Main Street from residential R 7.5 to general commercial GC. All in favor? For, all against? Thank you. Okay. So we will advance it for a month and we have time to think about it and talk about it. Next, we have, we have no new resolutions, so we have for council vote-
I have a motion? I'm sorry, are we to the approval, the appointments?
I'm about to read it.
Okay.
Okay. Council vote A, appointment of Kevin Dillard, Construction Superintendent to Board of Zoning Appeals, term to expire 12/31/2027. We need a motion to bring that to the floor.
I have a motion.
To bring it to the floor?
No, ma'am.
I make a motion to bring it to the floor.
But, ma'am, I believe I have the floor. I, I'm making a motion, as we discussed in, in council, the motion, in, a motion to-
Help me, Mr. Hughes, with Robert's rolls.
A motion to table this.
I think the mayor, you recognize Dustin to make the motion, so I think he has the floor.
Okay, so your motion is?
My motion is to table both appointments until the January meeting.
We're on one. So the motion is to council, to, to table what we're voting on, correct?
Then to table A then.
To table A, is there a second? Okay, the motion fails. Okay, so is there a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion and vote?
Yes, motioned.
Second.
We've discussed this previously, so maybe there's not any further discussion, we'll vote. All in favor of the appointment of Kevin Dillard, Construction Superintendent to the Board of Zoning Appeals, term to expire 12/31/2027, all in favor? Okay, none opposed? Next on the agenda is B, appointment of Watson Neely, Company Director of Public Affairs to the Planning Commission, term to expire 12/31/2028.
Same motion.
To?
To table until January.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table this appointment, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We take a vote now, or discuss?
Discussion.
In discussion.
Discussion. So I, I received an email today, I understand that the vote tonight on person for Planning Commission has already basically been approved, stamped by management. And tonight's vote is just to substantiate that for public appearance, am I correct in thinking this? If so, this is wrong. I replied, it's more complicated than that. However, we want the public to have competence in the process and I believe in part it's a matter of perception, therefore I move that this appointment be tabled until January so that we can vote on both candidates. And then this is nothing particular to this particular candidate, it, it's to the process of how this came before us.
But we just voted on one candidate, so we're talking about tabling-
Yes.
-this candidate?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on tabling the appointment of Watson Neely, Company Director of Public Affairs to the Planning Commission, we're gonna vote on tabling, all in favor of tabling? All opposed? All opposed? So now we go to the original, since the tabling failed. Okay, so we've already, we did, we brought that to the floor? I'm sorry.
A first, second to.
Is there a, is there a motion to bring it?
I make a motion that we accept.
To bring it to the floor?
To bring it to the floor.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're getting a crash course in Robert's rules, y'all. Okay, now we're gonna discuss the appointment of Watson Neely, if there's any discussion. Company Director of Public Affairs to the Planning Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-eight. Is there any, any additional discussion?
There were three candidates that applied, well, in fact, there were four that applied for this, but one decided he wanted the Board of Zoning Appeals. I just don't feel like the candidate that was suggested to us is the right candidate for the job. The other candidate was already a, on the commission and the third candidate, I think, would probably be, well, would be a better choice. He has been involved in the community, he comes to the council meetings, he really cares for this city and I think he would be the better choice. So I will be voting no for the appointment of Watson Neely.
Any further discussion?
Let me just say, I've known Watson Neely since he was a little boy and this ain't brain surgery or heart surgery. He could step into that committee and do an excellent job.
And I would like to take the opportunity before we vote to say that we, as a city and as a council, would appreciate a lot more applications and a lot more involvement and a lot more people to come in and fill out forms and apply for these positions so that it is extremely difficult to go through all of the candidates. We do appreciate all of the people that applied and the opportunity, but it, it was a small turnout, so we hope for, for more participation. So we can progress with this vote, okay?
I have something else.
Okay.
In state law for the Planning Commission, one of the items is in section six twenty-nine dash three fifty, and this is item C, says in the appointment of Planning Commission members, the appointing authority, which is the council, shall consider their professional expertise, knowledge of the community, concern for the future welfare of the total community and its citizens. Members shall represent a broad section of the interests and concerns within the jurisdiction. One of the reasons that I said I did not think Mr. Neely would be good for this is I don't think he has the future welfare of the total community and its citizens in mind. Case in point, two and a half years ago, when the property on Highway Eight was being annexed into the city, he was very adamant that he didn't want this subdivision to be behind him. He was very adamant that he didn't want this subdivision traffic to come down Franklin Drive. To me, that's a very selfish person who's thinking of himself and not the whole community. Even him getting a petition up to not to use Franklin Drive, he's not even taking the entire community in consideration and that's one of the reasons, excuse me, that's one of the reasons why I don't think he is a good fit for that job.
Okay, are we finished with the discussion so that we can vote? Okay. All in favor of the appointment of Watson Neely, Company Director of Public Affairs to Planning Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-eight? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. That's all we.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
I was gonna say, so we have an agenda, we have two motions to adjourn, all in favor. We're out, thank you for coming.